Everybody, I'd like to call our regular April 13th Town Board meeting to order. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being and every creature.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve our March 3rd special Town Board meeting minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can you wait one second?
Sure.
The March 3rd.
Handbook discussion.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'm breaking them out just because sometimes I think it's better that way. I'd like to make a motion to approve the prior minutes of our March 9th regular Town Board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The only thing I had on that is there's supposed to be something attached. I just want to make sure. Where's, I don't know where John is.
John's in the fourth row.
Oh, he's hiding back there. There's some comments that are supposed to be attached to the minutes. I just want to make sure in the original they're attached, they're not attached in the draft.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And then another motion to approve the prior minutes of our March 23rd regular Town Board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I have a couple announcements and then if anybody else does, that would be great. First of all, I'd like to announce that our new town website is www.rhinebeck-ny.gov. I want to thank our town clerk for his many, many, many hours of work in loading in all the new information. I think the website looks fantastic. It's been a group effort that John has done a tremendous amount of work on and any comments send to myself or John and we're amending things and tweaking as we go along, but it will get even better in the months to come. So, anything, I'm assuming that each of you looked at all of your pages and will forward any corrections or comments. At the next meeting also, a couple of years ago, the Web Committee proposed policies on franking and linking and I'm not sure that they've all been adopted, so I'll be asking that those that haven't been adopted are adopted at our next meeting, but I'm very pleased with it. Rec signups are, will be happening on March 9th, which is a Saturday at 9:00 a.m. here at Town Hall. We're happy to have Alice Cunningham back as our rec director and our camp director this year. And Alice can be reached on her town cellphone, which is 845-943-9526. So camp signups are May 9th, Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at Town Hall. Open book for taxes, for grieving taxes will be happening Monday, May 11th, from 2:00 to 4:00 and 6:00 to 8:00. Tuesday, May 12th, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. May 14th, from 9:00 to 1:00, and that's a Thursday. And Saturday, May 16th, from 9:00 to 1:00. It's all here with the assessors. You can check our new website. And grievance day is Tuesday, May 26th. And you can meet to grieve then from 10:00 to 12:00, 2:00 to 4:00, and 6:00 to 8:00. No appointments are taken for grievance. You just sign in and come in and meet with the assessors. Any other announcements from anyone?
Yeah, just briefly. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to John too. The website looks so much better. It's so much more user-friendly and I really appreciate it. I think you're doing a great job. I want to acknowledge that. I also want to acknowledge, I went to the kennel today. We have a new kennel now in Rhinebeck for the dogs. And I have to say, Bobby did a wonderful job. It looks fantastic. He worked really hard to do it. You know, Roger worked very hard with the vet to make sure that they could hold them temporarily for us. There were a lot of people that really just came together, supported each other for the best interest of the animals. And I really just want to say thank you so much to them. And I wish Bobby were here so I could say to him in person how impressed I was. Of course, I'm going to call him, but I want to acknowledge it publicly. And I want to acknowledge Roger too. I just feel like they both really went above and beyond to make this happen and I just, I felt really good being in there today, so.
Thanks for your work on that too.
Yeah.
It looks fantastic, so.
I have also sent a letter to the animal hospital thanking them on behalf of the town for-
Oh, thanks, Joe. That's awesome.
Yeah, dogs.
Any other announcements from anyone?
Well, I just wanted to say the Easter egg hunt happened. There were 150 kids there. And Alice dressed as Easter Bunny. In case you didn't know who it was, it was Alice Cunningham. It was a great success. The kids had a great time even though the weather wasn't super. About 200 people all together, including the kids.
Great.
So, thank you, Alice, and volunteers.
Thank you. You know, apropos of the dog kennel, and this will be coming, we, our dog control officer provides services for the village. Our attorney has finally finished a draft of how the services go and what we have to provide and what we don't provide unless there's additional funds. So that should have all gone out to you today. You should look at it. We can discuss it at our next Town Board meeting, or you can let me know what your changes are and we can send it off to the village. But we're getting there. We're ticking some good projects off the list, so thanks, everyone. Any other announcements? We have a presentation tonight for the Cemetery Committee. That's tab 17, so. Hi Suzanne.
Hi folks. Let's see, we have a couple of different things. First, there are two resolutions on your resolution list. There's Resolution Number 10 and Resolution Number 11. I thought maybe I should present those, or if you had questions about them, maybe-
Do you have an overall presentation to make to us?
I have a number of different things to bring up.
We can certainly take your resolutions out of order when you like and pass them.
Whatever works for you.
Why don't you go ahead with what you want to talk about?
Okay.
And then at the end, we'll do your resolutions.
Okay, so the first thing I think that was on there, aside, apart from the resolutions, was, and I think this is a tab in your folder-
Tab 17.
The tree, yeah, okay. So we already have passed a tree planting plan for the grassmere section. We passed that a couple of years ago, I think. And now this is the additional plan for the old section of the cemetery. We don't have a map to present to you that we could actually have approved, and that's in part because we don't have a map maker to make it for us like we did for the, we did the last time, it was a much simpler plan in the grassmere section. But we went through with the caretaker and we marked potential spots for trees and designated certain locations where certain trees would work better than others. And we came up with a list. This was our tree committee, subcommittee came up with this list. So, so we're going to work from that map, but it'll be, trees will be planted basically on a case-by-case basis. This is mostly going to be fueled through, through the Friends of Rhinebeck Cemetery, through our tree planting program that I think I presented to you a while ago. So people will select a type of tree and then we will basically spot the location of the tree. And we have actually two or three that will be going in this spring.
Right.
Yeah.
Who selects the tree?
Who selects the kind of tree?
Yeah.
The, well, it depends. In some cases, if it's a memorial tree, the way that we have the program set up, if someone who's supporting the Friends donates a certain amount of money, they can actually select the type of tree and decide to put it in memory of someone. In other cases, if people donate less than, like $250, then we put it into a general fund and we make decisions, the Friends makes decisions about how we're going to spend that money towards certain sets of trees. Like, for instance, in the fall, we plan to purchase seven locust trees to continue the line of locusts on Mill Road, and that will come from our general tree fund. So it depends.
And that money is raised by the foundation?
The money for the trees is being raised by the Friends, although we expect, in the past, some of the trees that have been planted in, in the Rhinebeck Cemetery were purchased by the town. And so it may be in the future that the town does use some of its own money to purchase some of the trees. It just depends what we do. But right now, we're hoping that the Friends will be fulfilling these, both of these programs.
And the Friend is that 501?
Yeah, it's a 501(c)(3). Yep, Friends of Rhinebeck Cemetery.
How much money have you raised?
$25,000 in the last year and a half.
And that's contributions?
Yep.
So, great.
Yeah, it's good. Yeah, we're happy.
I'm happy too.
Yeah.
The board, it probably is happy too.
Yeah, it's looking good. Thank you.
So that's the first thing. I don't know if you need to do a resolution for next time to pass that, or if you, what you need to do with that, but that's-
Do you want to get this to Warren? Wouldn't it be nice to have a resolution?
I can do the resolution too. Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
I think that'd be good, then there's a record of what we've-
Yeah, okay. So then, I have one other thing that I didn't, I just passed out to you now, and maybe this would make more sense after I talk about the two resolutions, if you want to take them out of order. Would you, do you want to do that?
Done with your-
Yeah, that's it. That's the whole presentation.
So, let's come back to committee and liaison reports, and I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2015-105, establishing a natural burial grounds as part of the town of Rhinebeck Municipal Cemetery. That's-
So, yeah, so this resolution Warren thought was important for a couple of reasons. We, obviously, we've already established the natural burial ground and we've, you know, we're already selling plots there, and we've had one burial already. But we are applying to be certified by the Green Burial Council. I know I brought this up to you folks before. So I'm working on getting that application together right now, and we, he thought that we should pass a formal resolution establishing it as a natural burial ground. And in that resolution, it says that we are seeking second-tier certification from the Green Burial Council. So he thought that that was the best way to go about doing that, and so it's sort of a formality. That's what that resolution is.
Did, do we have a motion to bring this to the floor? Did someone second it?
Oh, second.
Okay, I'm sorry, just formally. Warren also had some concerns that I know about the designation of that, that we, you know, it might be limiting to us.
Yes, and he's already, he's worked through all of those. So, the, the problem with that was, was that in, for the Green Burial Council, they had wanted for second-tier certification, some kind of a deed restriction.
Yes.
But municipalities can't do a deed restriction. But the GBC, the Green Burial Council is making, makes exceptions for municipalities because they know that municipalities can't do that. And they're also not worried about municipalities because, well, they're taxpayer-funded. So the chances of it just disappearing is, you know, or being turned over to someone else is not likely.
Okay, that's-
Yeah, so we don't have to do that.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion on this resolution establishing a natural burial grounds as part of the town of Rhinebeck Municipal Cemetery?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of words that are missing, have to be, or have to be changed in the resolution, if you have it in front of you.
I actually don't, but, okay.
Did you want to make a motion to amend the resolution?
Yes.
Is there a second for a motion to amend the resolution?
Well, you have to hear what the resolution is.
You can't hear until you have a second.
What?
You can't hear until there's a second.
Oh, okay.
Second.
In, on page two in 2B, I think the word "two" should come out. So it says, "Decedents shall not have been embalmed."
Okay.
I don't think the "two" is, belongs. And then if you go to page three, in L, no plantings of any kind, I need, I think you need to add the word "shall be" before "allowed."
Okay.
That's 2L, not 3L.
3L.
Yeah. Page three, yeah.
Page three, it's, it's 2L, item 2L.
That's fine.
So you're adding "shall be" in between "kind" and "allowed" on page three. And Joe, what was the one you said on page two?
Take out the word "to" in 2B.
Take out the word "to," so not "to have been embalmed"?
Yeah, "decedents shall not have been embalmed," that's what it should read.
Okay, yep. Thank you.
Any other amendments to the resolution? Any further, any further amendments? All in favor on amending the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Amendments are passed. Now we are going, we have-
Let me, can I just do one more thing? Okay, before we move on to the next one. So this is another piece of the application for the Green Burial Council that I wanted to bring up.
Is it this, are you talking about this resolution?
It's related to the natural burial ground, so should I bring it up?
We still have an open motion on the floor to pass the resolution. We've only passed the amendments to the resolution.
Got it.
Are there any, is there any further discussion on passing the resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so before we move on to the next resolution, I thought maybe this might be a good juncture to bring this up. So this is the deed, this is the natural burial deed that's already being given out to folks who purchase natural burial plots. And you can see that there's this paragraph that we had talked about in the past. It's the, well, you can see where I've made the changes. This paragraph was kept in there from years ago when the town didn't own the cemetery and it was an association cemetery, and we had the perpetual care fund and the permanent maintenance fund, and there was a percentage taken out. And so it used to have a percentage there, I forget what it was. But when the town took it over, we changed it to zero and didn't take out the paragraph. And one of the reasons why we left it in there is we thought maybe in the future at some point, we might want to actually take out some money and set it aside. Well, in the case of the natural burial ground, that's what we need to do in order to be certified by the GBC. We need, not to set aside in trust, but we need to set aside 10% of every plot sale in a separate account that goes toward landscape-level conservation. And so I've changed the language here, and this is, I think, how it should read. And so I can read aloud. "And the said party of the first part, for in consideration of 10% of the sum to be paid by the said parties of the second part, the receipt of which is hereby acknowledged to be used for the purpose of the payment of landscape-level conservation expenses as they may arise, in such manner as the town of Rhinebeck shall deem proper and expedient." So.
I think we have to refer this to our attorney.
Okay, sure.
And it really has to come in the form of a-
Yeah. We're not going on it.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I just figured-
Look, while we're talking generally-
Sure.
I guess I'd like to ask the committee to study the fees that-
We did that already.
It would be very nice if the cemetery were self-supporting, or at least close to it.
Right.
We are soon closing the books on 2014, so there'll be revenue and expenses, and we ought to look at that to see if fees ought to go up and whether it's, you know, I know many cemeteries in New York have perpetual maintenance funds. We had this money we inherited where there was a perpetual maintenance fund, but, you know, maybe that is something that ought to be established so relatives can put money in for perpetual maintenance and rather than relying on taxpayers to maintain. So I'm just asking that maybe the committee ought to just look at this whole subject and get back to us.
Sure. Although we did just raise fees, and we did do a study on the fees, so that part. But I think that the conversation about-
Well, compare it to revenue and expense.
Well, we compared it to other plots in the Hudson Valley.
But it could be-
It'd be nice to know whether it's making money or losing money.
Oh, the cemetery's losing money.
How much?
This is kind of a new business point.
Yeah.
We have an agenda here, so I'd like to push on, but your next resolution is, you only have two tonight, Suzanne?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to bring Resolution 2015-106, authorizing the institution of a lawsuit to obtain a court order approving the use of a permanent maintenance fund, the use of the permanent maintenance funds of the town of Rhinebeck Municipal Cemetery for permanent maintenance and capital projects. It's tab 11.
Right.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Question I have is, you talk about the stone walls, and I know you've talked about use of the money for stone walls. But I assume by approving this, we're not approving that the money go for stone walls, that you are going to come back to us-
Yes.
-once the money is freed up with an actual proposal. So by passing this, we are not-
No.
-approving a particular-
Yes.
...use of the money.
Yes, you're correct. In fact, the town attorney, he felt as though he, he needed to make a case to the courts by providing some evidence for what, what, what we would actually use the money for, what we need the money for. So that's why he decided to list those things.
Okay, so.
Yeah, but yes, the committee will basically be coming up with some, some ways that we could possibly use the money. The stone walls is going to be one of them, but it's obviously up to the town board to decide how we're going to use the money.
Did you want to speak to this resolution at all, or any-
Uh, no, I mean, I think if you folks all understand it, we're just, we're trying to access the funds so that we can use it for capital projects.
Right. No, my comment is just directed to the word.
Yeah.
Is there any other comment?
Yeah, only for cemetery purposes, though. Yeah. It can only ever be used for the cemetery.
I think we've discussed it several times, so.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Okay.
Suzanne, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your really hard work.
Yeah, okay.
You're really awesome.
See you next time.
And you're very committed to the Cemetery Committee. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay, I'm going to back up now if I can find my top page. I think I've thrown myself out of order. Any committee or liaison report?
Just Vandenberg Cove is pretty much on schedule. We've made the repairs, but they really want to get going on the chimneys and the manholes, so we'll have to start working on that next. Also, the readings are much higher than they should be.
The INI?
Yeah.
Again?
And supposedly a letter came to, into Town Hall from VRI, and I haven't seen it yet. Weston Sampson called me and said it had been sent, but they're challenging the, Weston Sampson are challenging the readings. They, they believe it's a significant problem.
Is it a calibration issue again, or?
Nobody knows what it is.
When did the letter come? I don't recall how it's seen as-
They called me last week, I believe, Thursday, I think, Thursday evening.
I was out of town, but I didn't, I didn't see anything from them.
It should be from VRI.
Yeah.
And the, what's the other thing with that? There's this, two of the manholes have sunk over the winter, they think.
Sunk?
Yeah, so they're now lower, so they're now catch basins and, but they, they believe that potentially that's because the town of Hyde Park Highway Department put a new sluice pipe in, in the Hyde Park area, and may have compromised two of the manholes. So the plot thickens, that's that. The other one was-
How close are, where are we in the process of the DCWWW?
Well, they're still looking and we're still fixing it. They're not going to touch anything until we fix the, you know, finish everything in July on the list. The other one was, there was a complaint about the dog park, so I went and cleaned it up, but that's not my job anymore, so Joe, I guess you're going to have to figure out how that works, so.
It's a maintenance issue.
Yeah.
We have to just get it seen to once a week or so.
It's disgusting.
Okay, anybody else? I talked about our website. I've talked about the policies that we're going to need to, I'm going to ask you to enact, you know, that are standard New York State policies. They'll be on for next week.
Let me mention workforce housing, affordable housing.
Can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I just got a letter before we came, Ellen from the mayor, regarding our joint tech initiative. We've gotten an extension, so we're, we're finishing up all the work. You should have a copy of it. We should read about it tomorrow. We've got some more purchases to make, and the county granted us an extension and we're allowed to move money around. So I'm working on a revised budget.
Did you see the village-town split of funds that-
Yeah, it was incorrect because the assumption, he assumed the wrong number for the tech grant, so I worked with him on that last week. He's revising it. We should have it back tomorrow.
Okay.
So we should probably have a meeting with the mayor to, you know, make sure everybody's happy and while we're winding this up. Also, I spoke with Warren Raplansky today. He is starting the process of the consolidation, the dissolution of the Fire Protection District and the consolidation to that end. He's calling the village and the fire departments for a joint meeting, which we'll notice and set up. Also, emergency services, the county has provided that, that framework for doing all the paperwork for us on the FEMA mitigation, which is great. Joe attended a meeting for the tax cap freeze while I was on vacation. We're opting into that. I'll get the filing done by May 1st. I believe we have all of our savings in place between the savings we have for insurance, some solar savings, you know, the tech grant, the shared services with Mylan for our paver. It looks like we're there. So what they're doing is ensuring that each municipality that opts in is, is giving the data to the state promptly. They're going to do that for us. So that's another good thing that the county's doing. I think that that's it for me.
On workforce, affordable housing, we had a, we all thought an excellent meeting with a young man whose company has done some projects for affordable housing. And he talked about the process of trying to get a state grant and things that we would have to do to try to foster such a construction project. We plan on having several more meetings with other people, and we're trying to formulate a plan as, and I'm working on a revision of the draft law that was presented months ago to meet the comments we received from the town attorney.
Great. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Resolution 2015-096, our preliminary abstract vouchers 364 through 453, 75 checks totaling May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I guess I had just one question on it. It's the whether a particular charge is going to be split or has been split with another community. So I guess we can either take that one off till that question gets answered, or if it's been split, and this is the split amount.
Are you talking about voucher 383, or Association of Towns registration and Hilton fees?
Yeah.
I don't know. I didn't-
Yeah, we don't know. We try to find out, but we don't know the information yet.
We had this last year.
Yeah.
Same question.
Did we want to make a motion to hold this voucher out?
Well, I would say if it's been split, then I think we should approve it. If it hasn't been split, we ought to get an explanation and hold it out.
Well, we've got a motion on the floor to approve these abstracts. We can either take it out or proceed with the motion, so.
Well, I think then we got to take it out while we have it, but if it's been split, I don't want to hold up the money for two weeks. That is the problem-
Did you check?[1701.32]
That I'm having, what?
Did you check with Shelley?
Yes, she doesn't know.
Oh, okay.
We're not going to find out the answer until tomorrow.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to pull out vouchers 382 and 383 from...
Well, my motion is to take them out if we find out tomorrow that they have not been split. If they have been split, then we should pay it.
Second.
That's the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we have a resolution on the table to approve preliminary extracts either with or without vouchers 382, 383, and three, that's it, depending on whether or not they were split. Any further discuss, a second? Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a resolution for, a motion for resolution 2015-097, our preliminary capital projects accounts payable abstract, three checks totaling $11,390.86. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2015-098, our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I just want to say that we missed in the budget, the one big item here is a contingency, $3,775 transferring into our software maintenance fees. This is from myrec.com. Somehow, in this budget, we missed that this is a yearly charge, the 3,700.
I thought that was in there.
No, so we're going to transfer it in, and we've made a note to remember it for this budget year.
Okay.
Everything else is pretty, you know, there's some money from contingency to consultants for Green Plan and some general repair, but this was the big ticket item. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I would like to make a motion for resolution 2015-099, awarding a bid for the purchase of a shared trailer. May I have a second?
Second.
Joe?
Yeah, I think I would make a motion to change the wording a little bit, and I have spoken to Kathy about it. We're not paying $19,950. We're paying one-fourth of that number. So Kathy and I came up with the wording, resolved that the town of Reinbeck, for a one-fourth interest, awards the bid for the purchase of a trailer as part of the shared equipment package to Hoffman Equipment.
In the amount of?
Yeah, keep, keep the rest of the language.
John, did you get that language change? Is there a second in support of this amend?
Second.
I guess there's no more. Does anyone else want to amend the resolution? Okay, all in favor of amending the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Now we have to vote on the resolution. We have a first, we have a second. Any further discussion on the resolution before us? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a resolution, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2015-200, appointment to the Board of Assessment Review, Dana Goldberg. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Other than, "Thank you."
Yeah, "Thank you." She was unanimously recommended by her committee for reappointment and by Steve Jenkins, her chair. And yes, thanks for signing up again. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2015-101, to opt in to include the county GIS photos in the municipality database. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? You're basically approving that I, you're voting that I can approve the contract with the shared service grant for the county that Hyde Park is lead on, and this is a, will be a great help to the assessors department. It'll take a little bit of work for them to load it, you know, do the files, but it just means that the photos will all be in one place, the photos of all of our real property.
There's no additional expense for this.
No, it's additional expense. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-102, for our annual brush drop-off. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Does anyone want to speak to this?
Yeah, I do. And I think there has to be a change. The person who has been taking care of the old landfill, excuse me, where we can, where we accept brush and leaves once a year, I'm sorry, once a month, the last day of the month, has been there for, I think, seven or eight years at the same rate of pay. And I would propose that we raise him a dollar, so that we would pay him at the rate of $13 an hour.
We didn't do that at our reorg meeting?
I don't know. All I see is this resolution. Maybe we did, if we did it already, that's...
Let's, I'll make a motion to amend the resolution to say at the rate of pay of $13 an hour.
Okay.
So resolve that the board authorizes the employment of said person to accept brush and leaves at the old dump site for the 2015 season at the rate of pay of $13 per hour. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have to vote on the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Resolution 2015-103, for the Rhine Cliff Waterfront Revitalization Master Plan. May I have a motion?
Motion.
In a second.
Second.
Eileen, you want to?
Well, we had a lot of discussions about this and a lot of presentations by LRC and Patricia Nguyen from the Waterfront Committee. So this is basically after going through the Planning Committee and being approved and going through CAB and also being approved with some concerns, which are all noted in the resolution. It's basically accepting that this is a vision. It's not, nothing's, nothing's happening, no action is being taken, but it's an acknowledgement that this is a, a long-term vision for the possibilities that exist developing the Rhine Cliff waterfront. Anything, obviously, that would, any action that would be taken would have to come before the board first for approval. There's a whole process that would have to take place. So it's not, it's not taking any action as far as...
Other than accepting the plan.
Exactly. It's simply accepting the plan.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thanks, Eileen. Resolution 2015-104, correction of employment terms, Cunningham. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Alan, do you want to introduce this?
Well, when we interviewed Ms. Cunningham for the job, we told her that she would be getting a salary that would be paid at a monthly rate, and when we passed the resolution, it was made an hourly position, which is inconsistent with the other two jobs she's doing. So to avoid the possibility of her having to keep track of hours doing one job versus the other and to avoid the confusion, I, we're going to put her onto salary, and she'll keep track of her hours, but not down to that fine level.
Yeah, that's a request from bookkeeping, that hours are tracked for the different positions.
Yes.
And I know that she's aware of that. So again, we're hiring Alice Cunningham as our rec director, our summer camp director, and our health director, so good luck, Alice. I know you can, I know you can do it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. We've done resolution 10, we've done resolution 11. Resolution 12, 2015-107, asbestos test in the Town Hall Boiler Room. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Joe?
Yeah, with respect to this, we have outstanding a RFP for a company to design an asbestos removal plan and to monitor the asbestos removal and to supervise the project. As soon as we get the asbestos removal plan, then we'll put out a proposed seal bid request to remove the asbestos. A number of people who have looked at the project down in the boiler room have asked whether we've done a test as to whether there really is asbestos there. Everybody who looks at it thinks there's asbestos there, but we get the question. And it turns out, we can do a test for less than $1,000. And I think before we spend the money, which may be in the range of 50,000 to 60,000, we probably should do a test. I am told that although it looks like asbestos, sometimes the manufacturer may mix chemicals differently, so you can't be positive as to whether it's asbestos.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay, I've gotten two bids. Alan has looked at them with me because they involve both higher mathematics and engineering, so to speak.
Multiplication.
Multiplication and division. That's, that's my, I'm not sure it's my strength, but it's my level of mathematics.
Any, any, it sounds like a good, I mean, good thinking.
Yeah.
We should spend a little bit of money before we spend a lot. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-108, Recreation Department chart, changes, I believe, not charges, correct for 2015. I think we have charges, they are charges, not changes. I was thinking it was the staff we were doing. Great. We have Alice here. Alice, you want to come up or, or, I was going to say Alan, what's your name?
I can do it.
Thanks for coming, Alice.
Okay, so what we're asking to have approved is the prices for the summer program. The daily pool admission is unchanged from last year. It's individuals are, residents are $5, students and seniors $4, after 5:00 PM $3, residents and 10, 6 and 6 for non-residents. Seasonal pool passes are also the same, 75, 100 for individuals, 180 for family, $20 for a senior, which is 62 and over. Seems young now. Non-residents, 150, 360 and 50 for the same thing. So those are unchanged from last year. Swim lessons, we're asking for an increase from 50 to 60 for resident individuals and 65 to 75 for non-resident. That's basically two weeks of lessons, half hour each day during the week. The tiny tots program is also going to be, going to be increased to $60 and $75 for residents and non-residents respectively. Swim team stays the same, 115 for individuals, 215 for family of residents, 165 and 315 for non-residents. Camp prices, individual, this is per week, from 90 to 100 for residents, from 160, sorry, to 170 for non-residents, for an individual kid. Each additional kid for residents will be 50 bucks, and each additional, and then after, after two, it's, well, it's 50 when you, if you, I'm sorry. It's 100, it's 90 for the first, sorry, 100 for the first kid, 50 for the second and subsequent Non-residents, it's 170, and it's 170 per child, no deals. After camp, it's the same as it was. So that's, that's what we're asking to pass. Once we pass this, we'll be able to put out a brochure.
Great.
And put the numbers into myrec, and people will be able to sign up for the camp.
It just seems confusing here. It says $50 additional child. Can I make a motion to strike after two on that? And after two on the line below? It's just the one strike, $50 per additional child. Because you're not saying that it's 100, it's $100 for the first two kids. You're saying it's 100 for the first kid and...
No, it's 100 for the first two, and then it's 50 each additional child.
So, okay, so, okay, that's not how Alan...
Actually, I messed up.
Okay, so this, that's okay, this stays then. It makes sense if that's how it is. Any further discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-109, Recreation Department hires for 2015. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Alan, you want to take us through here?
Yeah, basically, these are the water safety instructors and lifeguards and cashiers for the pool. And this resolution includes hourly wages. The minimum wage has gone up. Alice has compared the wages we're paying these, the guards and WSIs and so on, to other pools, and we're still lower than the, than the surrounding communities. But in effect, we're raising the hourly rates by approximately a dollar. In some cases, it's a dollar and a quarter, in other cases, it's 75 cents or whatever. You can read it.
Yeah, I've read it. Looks good. And we've got our cashiers at the same rate this year. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thanks, Alice. Okay, resolution 2015-110, Recreation Department non-resident grandchild policy. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Anyone want to introduce this?
Well, up, in the past, if a resident child was, is, was limited to a kid that lived in the town. And this resolution basically proposes that we give the resident, the resident rate to grand, to the grandchildren of residents who are here for the summer.
How did, we, we opposed this last year. How did this come back?
You want to say something about it?
It just does seem to be...
Can you come up?
Come up and go.
I, I just asked how this got, we had a big discussion about it last year.
The rec committee, basically.
Right, and we're getting, it just seems to be a better benefit for grandparents. I mean, we're all getting to be that age where we're going to be grandparents, and if we have our grandkids come up for a summer or even four weeks, and we want to put them in the camp for a couple of weeks and give them that experience, I think that it should be part of that grandparents' benefit.
What if the grandparents live here and the kids are in Red Hook? So we're granting kids who, you know, close.
Yeah, I'm just going to say that in my experience of being in the camp director, I haven't seen that. But you, you're right, that could happen.
I feel, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel. I feel that resident rates are for residents and kids that, that's just how I feel.
I agree, actually. I feel like we had a lot of discussion about this last year. I feel like it'd be unfair to other people who could say, well, what if I have a foster child, or what if I have a aunt?
What if I have a niece or a nephew?
That's right.
Well, that was another question that did come up during our committee meeting, because there are people that take in fresh air kids. And always in the past, we had granted them a resident fee if they were coming up because it's the right thing to do, you know. I feel it's a good thing to do.
I don't think it treats people equally. That's what, that's what I'm not comfortable, and I'm, I'm a grandmother, by the way, whose children are out of town. Like, I would benefit from this, but I think it's wrong. I really do. Like, how do you pick and choose who you're going to give special treatment to when it comes to who's a resident? I mean, you're either a resident or you're not.
Yeah, I can only try.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I have a lot of grandparents approach me.
Well, thanks for bringing it to our attention. Is there any further discussion?
So we reject?
Well, we're going to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, I'm opposed. The resolution does not pass. Residents are residents.
Okay.
Okay, but thanks for bringing it to us, Alice. It's great you're here. And I think we have one more rec thing, and then resolution 2015-111, adding an additional week of recreation program swim lessons. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Alan, do you want to?
Yeah, basically, the camp season is seven weeks. The swim lesson program is two weeks, so it's two weeks, two weeks, two weeks, and there's, we have this odd week at the end. And the idea would be to add another swim lesson program that would, instead of being a half hour every day, would be an hour a day, so it would work out to be the same number of hours and the same charge. And the idea would be to take advantage of the fact that we've already got lifeguards and water safety instructors there for the camp. We may as well use them for the swim lessons as well.
Great idea. Any further discussion?
We did this last year.
It's a good idea then, it's a good idea now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I guess apropos of camp, you know, we have myrec up and running, and that's great. Good luck, Alice, you know. Nice to have you back. Good.
So that's half the phone.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Alice.
Yeah, I, I announced the rec sign-up earlier before you got here with your town rec phone.
Why?
All right?
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you, Alice.
Thanks for coming.
Any new business? I have two items before me that I've been.
I have one.
Asked to bring up. Why don't you go first?
Okay. A couple of weeks ago, I went to a Joel Tyner meeting with Gary Kenton and a couple of solar people over in Village Hall once I finally figured out how to get into it. And so they talked about community grid and a few other things. And tomorrow night, there's going to be a presentation to the village board about it. There's, there's grants, competitive grants, that can, that'll give you up to $100,000 to study the possibility of doing a community grid. We talked about this.
This is like a solar park.
Yeah, John Metzger and the people here present, present to us.
But this is Gentry Roush who lives here, who, what I want to do is I want to ask him to come and give us a presentation at the next meeting.
Great.
The, the other thing about this is there's a lot of land at the landfill that's potentially usable for this. I've asked the, the C A B to look at a policy for, for that. And the other thing is, we have methane there which could be used to supplement it. So, and we're right by the power lines. That, that's why we want to look at it.
Great.
So.
So, John, can you put that on for presentation next meeting?
Thanks.
I have two resolutions in front of me. I'll see if we can bring them to the floor. One is resolution 2015-112, adopting the IRS mileage reimbursement rate. I'll make the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
This is from our highway superintendent. Apparently, we've been lax at reorg in, you know, keeping current with the rates. We're a little behind and, you know, gas, although better now, has been crazy. So this states that the, the Internal Revenue Service periodically issues a standard mileage rate for the cost of operating an automobile for business. And whereas the town wishes to reimburse its employees for official travel in their personal vehicles at the current IRS standard mileage rate now. I believe we pay 55, it's up to 57 and a half cents a mile. So we're asking that we resolve that we'll be current with what the IRS sets. Any discussion on this?
I guess my only comment is I don't have any problem with the principle of it, but we did go through a whole discussion of not last minute things on the agenda. And I do believe we have to show flexibility from our Wednesday afternoon deadline. But to get into the habit of passing out resolutions at meetings, I think really violates that. So I don't think we ought to open the door to getting resolutions at meetings, that if things can be at, for my part, if, if it can be added on Friday before it gets sent out to the public, that's fine. But at least this board said no.
I thought you wanted the flexibility of being able to bring them to the floor.
Yes, I want the flexibility, but the flexibility should be by Friday afternoon so that we don't get resolutions when we come into the building today to look at it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll try and bring another one then. This is resolution 2015-113, Town Hall Use Application for the Reinbeck Drama Club. They're asking for a late approval so they can use it tomorrow. May I have a second? April, I'm sorry, the application date. The date of the event is April 14th.
No, no, 19th.
Okay, it looks like a four, I'm sorry. April 19th, so that's before our next meeting from 6 to 8. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, maybe we should hold it off till the next meeting.
Hold it off till the next meeting on the 27th?
This one, I think, is an emergency, Bruce.
Emergency. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. That worked out okay.
I have one thing I'd like to bring up under new business. We all received an email from Jeff Farber regarding the ferry, the taxi from the Rondout from Kingston in Rancliff. I'd like to invite him to do a presentation in front of the board about exactly what he's proposing.
Great.
Okay, so I'll do that at the next meeting.
Yep. Any other new business?
No. Elaine's point ties in with our first discussion item.
Great.
Oh, is that what that was about?
Yeah, well, not necessarily, no, but it relates.
Would have been part of it, okay.
Ferry dock is a discussion item.
The ferry dock that we have was constructed a number of years ago. It's a very heavy dock and it's very hard to put in the water. Also, it's, it's not falling apart yet, but it's soon to be falling apart. We probably could get another year out of it. So we really have to think about whether we should continue to put it in the water. We certainly can test it out if this company wants to use it. Maybe when they come for the presentation, we could find out if they need such a heavy and large dock. But I want the board to be aware that that ferry dock has a limited life that may not go beyond next year. And we're probably talking 5,000 plus to build a new one, plus the difficulty of putting it in the water and taking it out of the water.
Well, if we don't, you know, I know that the waterfront committee in the past has said that kayakers and canoeer people use, use it. If we don't have a ferry service, maybe something will decide to cost out as a dock that's appropriate for that. But then the clear, is it, I can't remember the name of the clear water. Other big boats do use it and the Coast Guard uses it.
No, I don't think that, we're not talking about, we're not, the clear water, I believe, ties up to where the Coast Guard ties up, which is not.
It's not the ferry dock.
Not the ferry dock, but ties up to the, I don't know, what do you call it, Bruce? Bulkhead?
Right. What we get is, we, we get some of the bigger personal water crafts, whatever you want to call them, you know, the boats tie up there when they go over to and get something for lunch. We also get the sheriff ties up there.
Right, so that's right.
The patrols. You know, we have this discussion at the next meeting. The thing to remember is that this was built by Kingston. We paid for the materials, but it was assembled by Kingston, so.
So if there's no need, maybe we don't rebuild it.
Right.
So we'll look at it.
But while we're on this discussion, Bruce mentioned the, you mentioned the clear water and the Coast Guard. Where they tie up, there's been damage to the bulkhead. And we're preparing a claim form for the Coast Guard because we think they may have facilitated or advanced the damage, but who knows if we'll get anything out of that. It has to be repaired because if any of you have gone down there, there's a piece of the bulkhead that's damaged and missing. Bobby estimates that it's $10,000 to $15,000.
Didn't we have that in our budget this year for dock repair or is that another portion of the dock?
Don't know.
I think we allocated money for that.
I don't know.
No, we, we put in for the, the wood, the boards, but the bulkhead damage, we didn't put in because it happened this winter.
Okay.
So there really is no money in the budget for an expense like that and we'll have to take it out of fund balance. But Bruce, you said we did put some money in, you think, for some lumber?
Yeah.
14.
For which project?
The dock.
I, I don't remember. I'll have to look, but we can figure this out when we have to allocate money, right?
Okay, yeah, we're not there, but Bobby does want to order the materials.
Well, I'll go over the budget with you and shall it, you know, shortly.
Okay, and then we'll tell him to order the materials.
I have a question for you too, Joe. Is the ferry dock the same thing as the sea taxi?
Yes.
Okay, because Bobby just submitted to me the estimate for this because I'm writing in a piece of this into our grant.
Okay, as to that, I think maybe if we could switch that to the bulkhead, because I think we ought to make a decision as to whether or not we want to rebuild the ferry dock. And I'm wondering, maybe we can talk after as to whether we can ask for the grant to rebuild the bulkhead.
The bulkhead, is that going to be, because the estimate I got from Bobby for the sea taxi, and which is it, ferry dock or sea taxi? Because I keep seeing different terminology.
I don't know. Is it tomato or tomato?
The, the total I got from Bobby was like $4,900.
Yeah, that's what I said, about $5,000.
Yeah, and, and actually, the, the amount that's remaining in the grant for us to spend is only $1,267, so about, it only would cover like the trusses, which he estimated at like $1,169.
Right.
So are the bulk, is the bulkhead more than that amount or less?
Yeah, the bulkhead is, is also, it won't cover the whole thing. It's 10 to 15,000.
Well, one, one concern I have, and when I, I thought about this when I saw Bobby's estimate, is if, if, we would still have to come up the town with $3,642 after the trusses were paid. So I think we have to show that we have that and are willing to do that. Otherwise, I'm not sure we're going to qualify to use it for the grant. So if the bulkhead is even more, it might put us even, even more danger of them rejecting it. So it's something to think about and something we need to talk about.
Right, let's talk about if we can switch it to the bulkhead, because that I know we are going to go ahead with.
But we are putting the insurance claim in like we decided, right?
Yes, to the Coast Guard, but again, I think it, it may be problematic.
It hasn't been in the past. We give them the bills and they, they pay them.
Well.
Did you speak to the, to our insurance broker?
No, we've put in claims to the Coast Guard before.
And they've paid them.
They've paid, but I, I don't want to get into the whole thing, Bruce. We, we can talk about it after.
Okay, something secret.
Any further discussion on the ferry dock? Our May 26 Town Board meeting will be happening as originally planned, even though it's on grievance, open grievance day, book. Our assessors have graciously agreed to share the room with us, so we'll put some seating outside in case folks are waiting or they can wait in back and we'll all be here together. So our May 26 Town Board meeting is a Tuesday because the 25th is Memorial Day. So Tuesday, May 26. Specifications for bidding on asbestos removal. Did we talk about that already?
No, I just wanted to inform the board, I'm making two changes in the R F P that's already out. One of the changes deals with a requirement for an umbrella policy of $5 million. That is in the, our usual requirements for insurance. And I've been getting some kickback from potential bidders saying that they don't carry an umbrella policy. I did speak to our insurance agent and he indicated it's a nice to have, a belt and suspenders, but he didn't think it's imperative and that if we keep that, we will foreclose from small companies bidding. So I propose to get rid of that. Also, I have a pretty strict time limit on the interval between awarding the contract and coming up with the plan. It's about eight days and I'm proposing to extend that a little bit. So I would like to send out an addendum tomorrow to our potential bidders and post on our website an addendum to the R F P.
Okay, sounds good. I have two things to talk about, but first, Alan, I know that the bids were open for the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazarella Park Pavilion and Infrastructure.
Yes.
They're not at this meeting. I know they have things going on. Bob wasn't available. Can this go on the next agenda or do we, do we need a special meeting?
No, we talked about having it on the next agenda.
Sally had asked me if we could do a special meeting, but you don't think we need one?
No.
Okay, will you let her know that it will be on for our, I'll email her as well, just talk to her.
That was what we agreed to at the last committee meeting.
Okay. So we'll be discussing the bids that we received on the Thompson Mazarella Park, where we are with it and what the next steps are. They've asked for a 30-day extension to the bidders. They've returned the bond money to the people not selected, so we're in good shape. Update on County D P W project at the intersection of River and Mount Rutzen Roads. At our last meeting, we had a little bit of a discussion regarding a proposed County D P W project to improve traffic safety at the intersection of River and Mount Rutzen Roads. This is a Y intersection currently with a, with a center island and it has dangerously limited sight distance, both as you go north and as you, as you go north, you have to turn and look over your shoulder and as you're going south, you encounter a bump. So if there's two or three cars stopped, ready to turn on Mount Rutzen, there's rear ends that happen there. We've seen over 33 accidents in the past eight years, or more. To address the problem and protect our residents, the county and the town are considering a conversion of the intersection from the present dangerous Y to a much safer T. The County D P W is working on the plan and will present it to the Town Board at a public meeting this summer or in the early fall, as soon as they have all the questions answered. While all involved are mindful of the desire to minimize the environmental impact of the project, it may be necessary to remove some trees that now, that now occupy the center median of the intersection. Accordingly, we are working with an arborist, Kathy has reached out to an arborist, to learn about the trees, including their health, age, historical and botanical value, and their importance in the local biosystem. This information will help to formulate a plan that best accommodates the safety of the several thousand drivers who use the intersection each day, the environment and the nature of this scenic intersection, which is a pretty important intersection. While the final plan may involve removing some trees, it will also include planting of replacement trees and we will gain considerable green space. I want to express gratitude to the County D P W for being, as always, proactive and collaborative with us on road safety issues on county roads here in Reinbeck. And if anybody has any questions or concerns, I am available, just contact me. This went through committee last night in the county to get funded. There's a $100,000 line item for a safety issue. They're voting on it tonight. I'm, I'm hoping that we will be funded. Once the county has a plan, they'll come forward and present it. Reinbeck's getting busier and busier and I think that the amount of drivers on this road has gone up dramatically in the past five, six, seven, eight years. I think there's several thousand people, 4,000 people a day using the intersection and we've had some pretty bad accidents. So that's an update, that nothing is been decided. The county's working with us proactively. We have no say in this. It's a county road. If we say we don't want it because we love the nature of that scenic road and that triangle and the trees, they won't do it. But if it's a safety issue, you know, I hope we'll support it. I'm going to ask for a presentation and then I'll ask the Town Board either to accept the proposal or reject it, but it's a safety issue. Is there any comments or concerns? I see Ryan there. Hi, Ryan.
Good evening, Board. I just wanted to update the Board and what the C A B is doing. We have been in contact with the Department of State, planning and Development Office with our contact for this area, Reinbeck and the surrounding district, Jamie Eathier. And he has advised us that the county should be following our consistency review and what has been laid out in the conservative consistency review. And if necessary, they have a concern with the potential environmental impact and he has said that they might intervene with the county, with, with the plans, but he is going to mean the direction of D E C Region 3 Permit Office as well as the D O T Office of the Environment, Terry Smith, Assistant to the Director, and because the county will have to go through the permit process. And this is under review up at the state right, right, right now. And, but we are willing to sit, to sit down with the county. But we are willing to sit down with the county with-
What's going to happen, thank you. What's going to happen is that they will come to us when they have a final plan and the Town Board will weigh in on it. We will make sure that all permits are done and we'll take your advice under consideration and we'll either ask them to proceed or not.
I'd just like to remind the Town Board that this area is in the-
The L W R P, we are very much aware of it. All permitting processes will be followed.
That this office can intervene with the county and what their plans are.
So you're for a safety issue.
That is what this-
We will follow, we will follow all permitting and make sure that they do as well. Thank you. Update on proposed mining amendment. We had said months ago that we would probably be, we would be voting tonight. I was hoping to bring it to a vote. But we not only needed time to digest the public comments, we are still working with our attorneys. We have foiled some information from the D E C. We've gotten some information without foil. There are a couple of issues that we wanted further information on and we have a lot of it. What our attorneys suggest is that we hold a public workshop so that we can publicly ask our questions that we have and decide on how we're going to proceed. I'm hoping that we'll have all the information we need from the D E C by our next meeting on the 27th. And if so, I would like to schedule a workshop so that we can discuss where we are and what this board, what you individuals, and then that means collectively as a board, we want to do. But we were waiting for D E C information and some additional information from Warren Raplansky and John Lyons. This is still very much in the works. We're spending a lot of time on it. We have Warren Raplansky working on it. We have a planner working on it. And we have John Lyons working on it. Does anybody want to add anything? Sound good?
Yeah, I think we should have the workshop, but I think we ought to have the information before we have-
We're hoping to have it. And if we do, we'll have it at our 27th. If not, we'll have to push it off into May. Is there any public comment on any non-agenda or any items? I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Thank you. We'll be back. Okay, we're back in. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.